This is all by listening. We wanted to take this opportunity to listen to you guys. We will be asking follow-up questions. We'll not be speaking on behalf of the Board. Any thoughts or opinions expressed are the individuals and not the position of the Board. This isn't a meeting. This is just a town hall event to listen. If it appears that we are straying into deliberations, myself or another Board member may interject just to curtail the conversation just to avoid violating any sunshine or open meetings act. Please keep all criticism constructive and refrain from any personal attacks from individuals. There are no time limits, but please be as concise as possible so that others can have time to share their input also. We're all here to help make our school district better, so please be respectful. So with that, if any of the other Board members want to say anything to get started, thank you for coming and hopefully we can have this to help our district grow and have a productive town hall here. Anybody else want to say anything?
Not much, just that this is a great idea that Ken had, so he deserves all the credit for this. But I think it's a good opportunity to listen beyond the two minutes that's a part of the standard Board meeting, so he can express your thoughts in a little bit more detail and, you know, we have the opportunity to understand a little bit more.
All right, with that...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, one other comment just to keep in mind. I know this is something we all know, but it's still worth a reiterate. We do have also the emails that's in the, you know, Bethel Park, they're called the Chronicles, I think it is, and also we have phone numbers. So this should not end here and it's to always keep in mind that you can send a lengthy email. The longer the email, the harder it is to grasp. We'll try to keep your emails, you know, to the, like Ken said, concise, don't want rambling, but nonetheless, there's other needed, there are other sources of communications while with the phone or email and coming to meetings, but there is a two-minute time limit, so that's why, you know, all the things are there.
All right. Well, we're going to start out with Stephanie and then she's going to walk around the microphone. The microphone is, this is going to be televised on BPTV, so the microphone is just so your questions or comments can be heard on the recording.
Thank you, Ken, for organizing this and thank you, everybody, for attending. We appreciate you taking the time and showing us that you care and want to hear what the community members have to say about the district and our concerns and our thoughts. So thank you all for your service on the Board. We do sincerely appreciate the job that you do. One of the comments that I had is something that some of you have heard me talk about at Board meetings before, excuse me, before. I know that you're probably aware that the district underwent an audit from the state for their gifted education compliance and the results of that audit were a little bit alarming to some and less than stellar. The state's currently undergoing some transitions in the gifted and special ed area, so the follow-up from the state, I know, has been delayed and minimal. However, I know that local parents and the local page affiliate have spoken with administration and have made offers to assist them in addressing some of their compliance issues. To my knowledge, little to none of that has been, we haven't been taken up on the offer. We've not gotten many answers to our questions about the status of the progress that the district promised to make in previous meetings. And I know I myself and a lot of the other parents that I speak with would be appreciative if the Board would ask the administration about the status of that and follow up and try to get some movement in a positive direction sooner than later. Thank you.
Can you summarize, like at least put in context, some of the non-compliance areas?
Sure. One of the, the basic thing that's, the most egregious thing that's out of compliance is the paperwork, the GIEPs. They are, they found a lot of issues with the way that the GIEPs are written, the content within the GIEPs, and that document kind of guides the learning experience for these children and their needs. And with insufficiently completed paperwork comes an inability to serve the students appropriately. So that's a main area of focus. And the other one which we've spoken about and I think we, the district has made some progress on is a section of the GIEP called the PLEP, which outlines the student's current progress levels and allows the teachers and the administration to understand where the student's instruction should begin so that they can benefit meaningfully from the instruction being provided and they're not sitting in a classroom listening to something that they already know or perhaps something that might be well over their head because nobody understands where they're supposed to be learning.
What's PLEP?
Yes, present levels of educational performance.
And you said that has been worked on?
I know the district has put into place some additional screening tools to try to establish better data on that. I don't know how much that has been used and I don't know that it is always being used in the best ways. I think that the district could, the district employees could benefit from some education on, you know, what those scores mean and how that translates into the, you know, the everyday classroom experience for kids.
You want to make a comment? Yeah. And, okay. Yeah, I spoke with Lori Sutton, who directs our gifted education program. And one of the problems they had was somebody had left at the state and the person who would have worked with us in order to correct things, in order to verify that we had done things correctly, had gone and they didn't have any place to do that. So she was still working on it, but there was no interface with the state so she could have things officially corrected or get official feedback. So I will double check on that and see what that status is, but that's one of the things that happened.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Hi, my name's Lisa Tursky. I'm gonna get out of the sun. I live near IMS in the high school and so therefore I live in the walking district. And I've brought this up before, I've sent, I guess it was about a year ago, I sent an email to the school board asking that they reconsider what makes up the walking zone. A study was done and this, by the state, and they found it to be a safe walking zone and I still don't agree with it. I don't know what went into the study. I don't know exactly what all the answers were other than it's a safe zone. Anybody who lives there, anybody who lives in Bethel Park, there's a lot of talk about it lately, people not stopping for stop signs, people speeding through our neighborhoods. It's no different on Summit Street and this is the part of Summit between Highland Avenue and Broad Street. We have students who are driving to and from school. We have parents who are driving their kids to and from school, staff members. We have two or three buses. I think one year we even had four or five buses. I've been there for 11 years. So we have a lot of traffic. There is nothing in place that helps our children walk to and from school safely. I just read at the end of the school year that we purchased more cameras or some more equipment to help the kids on the school buses get on and off safely and so we can catch those drivers that are not stopping appropriately when the bus lights go on to indicate a child is getting on or off the buses. We have no special lights, we have no sidewalks, we have no crossing guards, we have no bus drivers. We have nothing to help our kids get to and from school safely. So I'd like for you to reconsider it again. Just because the state said it was safe, I don't think that we need to stick with that. I think somebody should come out and take a look. And I invite you all to come to my house, which is near the corner of Summit and Orchard, in December, January, February, March, when it's pitch dark out at the time that my kids would be walking to school, at the time where there may be snow on the ground and you have no sidewalks to walk on, there's cars on the sides of the streets, there's no safe way for these kids to get to school. I really think we need to consider that. We're doing things for the kids on the buses and I get it and it's great, that should not stop. But what are we doing for the kids who have to walk? Around IMS and the high school, it's a unique situation because we do have so many young drivers driving to and from school. They're tired, they've been cooped up, they've had a bad day at school, they got a bad test grade. They need to get home to a job, they need to just get home so their parents can have the car, whatever. It's not a good situation in my opinion. I know other parents agree with me, I don't know if any of them are here, but I really wish we would take another look at it, especially where we are. Probably my kids have to walk three-quarters of a mile to get to the school property. That doesn't mean anything. I've driven them to school through the school property, speeding, don't stop at stop signs. A staff member who had a very, had a car that would stand out, cut me off on my way to IMS. So it's not just the students, it's not just the parents, it's our own staff. We really need to take a look at this and help these kids get to and from school. Thank you.
Lisa, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up a little. The speeding, the running stop signs, things like that, have you contacted the municipality and asked them to?
Yes. Yes, I have, I have in the past. And we even had a, two or three years ago, it was in February, we had a drag race on our street. A one boy, I understand, took out a light pole, took out the electricity, was out for eight hours. It's just really not safe in my opinion. And again, come and walk it yourself and see what goes on and on one of those days when it is cold and snowy and just not a good, just not a good scene for the kids.
I have one other comment. The, I know there's some places where they require sidewalks, things like that, and I don't, I know some pretty, but I don't think I remember sidewalks on your road today.
We do not.
So it's something you could talk to the municipality to see if you want to get a petition and get an ordinance to require everybody to put sidewalks in. It's a big expense, I mean, but if we're looking at safety, I mean, that's an answer because, you know, you're keeping a kid off the street at least, but I'm just giving you a thought.
Right.
You know, it's not my opinion or whatever, you know, I'm just telling you that it's something that you could look into. Because when you have the police there, they have the speeders and I'm sure they caught a couple of speeders, but then while they're there, nobody speeds and then when they leave them, they speed. And so, but that goes around, not just Summit, I'm sure it's all around.
It is.
And you get the places like Mount Lebanon that don't have any buses and they, all the kids have to walk to school and they've got dangerous roads there too, so it's a difficult thing, but I understand, I sympathize with that. And kid safety is our top priority, as you know, with what we did with the school police officers and all that. You've heard from recent meetings, but look into the municipality on the, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
I wear a couple of different hats here. I'm a parent, I'm an employee, and I'm also a vice president of the parent and aide unit, so I just want to state those three things. First of all, as a parent, first and foremost, of course, I have a little bit of concern about in the high school, students being in the administration wing where there's a lot of confidential information being discussed. I always encourage my kids when I drop them off from a doctor's appointment to hand the excuse to the adult in charge, not the student sitting at the window. I think there's a little bit of HIPAA FERPA going on there that I'm not really sure.
You're talking about the attendance?
I'm talking about the attendance office. And I've seen other kids in counseling and different areas of the administration wing. As a nurse, HIPAA FERPA is a big thing with me, so I want my kids to have the same rights as the kids that I take care of. And secondly, as an employee, I'd like to suggest, take a school board to work day. I'd invite you all to come and sit with us and see what we do every day, see what really goes on in the buildings, to see exactly how, when you vote, how it really affects the students, the staff, the building. Or maybe even, because I know all of you work as well, have one Board member be liaison for each building, someone we could contact when there's a situation or something that needs discussed. Thank you.
I have a comment on that. First, that attendance thing, that sounds like something that could be probably run me pretty easily. And is this the first time you're bringing this up?
Yes.
And how long have you been concerned about this?
Um, last year it became more of an issue.
Okay. Again, keep that in mind, I mean, for everybody, just, you see something simple like that, that could be easily discussed and they could probably figure out a way of maybe preventing any leaking of information like that, so that would be covering that. But the other thing is about taking a school board member to work day, I agree, and just let you know, we, there's a few of our school board members that have done this just last year. It was when we were evaluating the, well, maybe it's not actually, it was a year and a half ago, I don't know, but it was evaluating the Wonders program with other people. So we actually went to the kindergartens for the whole day, we went to every single, and then first grade and the second grade to see how it worked out. And we learned a lot by doing that, so there's a lot to be learned. Now, sometimes, you know, it gets a little awkward for the class and the teachers and all, right, to have people there, but nonetheless, it's a good thing and we have done it, so maybe if you want us to do it every couple of months or a year, I don't know, but we're maybe go to do it in the high school, but that'd be an option. So, it's good, you know.
I really like the idea on the face of the school board member being a liaison to each school. My concern is and has been with undermining the administration once we do that. Do you have any suggestions or ideas how we could do that without undermining the authority of the building principals or the administration that's in place?
I really don't, I don't really see as undermining as much as having an open line of communication. There are situations that go on that I don't know that you guys have the full picture and I'll just leave it at that.
Now, to follow up with that, do you know, with your position as the VP of the parents and nurses, do you know of any other districts or any other, any other areas where they do something similar that we may be able to take a look at the model from?
Not that I know of, but I can ask some of the other nurses.
Again, the undermining, you know, there is the chain of command that you're supposed to go through as an employee of the administration with concerns. As a citizen, you can always reach out to us, but having someone there in a permanent role, it almost circumvents the chain of command.
I understand.
And that's my concern, but I do like the idea on the face of it.
Okay.
If I, if I understand you correctly, you wanted somebody to come spend the day so they could have a little seat. And when you said liaison, you meant simply to report back to the Board what they saw and explain maybe some?
Yeah, I mean, you guys, I'd love for you guys to come and have lunch for me, with me one day during recess.
I'd be glad to do that, but just make sure that, I probably have to get my clearances up then.
Yes, you would.
All those things, they ran out this year, I think.
Yeah, I think, you know, doing that to get, you know, an understanding of, you know, kind of the whole environment, I think is a good thing. I agree with Ken that you don't want to establish a new reporting structure. I mean, the structure has to work, but, you know, coming up with an understanding so that when some of the issues come on the agenda that we have to vote on to really understand them better and the impact, I think is a great idea.
Absolutely. Like even with a liaison, like say, let's just say, Ken, he chooses Memorial out of the hat. He attends the open house, he attends the fun fair, he attends, you know, whatever, the ice cream social, whatever other art show that we have. And he gets to really see how, you know, what the kids are doing too. I mean, I know Vicki just gives a little blurb, but it's also good to see how you're voting, how it positively impacts the kids and different things like that as well. I mean, it's not just the negative connotation, it's the positive as well.
Right.
Hi, Stephanie, thanks. Mike McCurnin here. Just two thoughts to feedback to what these two people had said. One, as far as the HIPAA concern, I don't know if the solution works, but if I was turning in a six slip for my grandson, I'd just put it in an envelope with his name on it and hand it to the kid that's taken the name. I mean, seeing a kid's name on an envelope means nothing and then whoever is supposed to be dealing with the HIPAA private information on the note can open it and record it or do whatever. So that would get past eliminating the free help that they're getting from a kid and yet still keep the privacy part. As far as the Follow Your Kid Day, or whatever you want to call it, if you summarize your findings and send a copy of yours to the open Board, not to the open Board, but to the other Board members of what you found, plus to the superintendent, that creates an open communication. There is no reason, Ken, in your case, with your children, if you saw something at Franklin, as a parent, you would report it, but it would also carry weight as a Board member and you wouldn't hesitate to do that. And you may be able to get the time of the superintendent, but you would probably put it in an email, forward it to him and forward it to the Board members who people were aware. If it was something big enough, it was something, you know, Johnny kicked Sally or something, no, but, you know, something of import, that would get you around the idea of clandestine communication because it's going to be opened by the Board members who need to know.
Just to be clear, like the Go Take a Board Member to School Day, I have no objection to that on any aspect. It was the idea of a liaison, I was looking at that maybe as something different than some other people are, as a standing liaison for each school, like a Board member has at two schools. And once you, once you do that, like I said, I like the idea on the face of it and I'd be very interested in exploring it and finding out how we could make that work without circumventing the established chain of command. Because one of the reasons that we're having this is to bring input and information. One of the things that I would really like to see more of is a varied input to issues before I'm making decisions, so I have a more robust view. So I really like that idea. I just want to make sure that if we are to pursue something like that, we do it in a way that we don't circumvent the authority of the current administration. So if anybody knows of anything, please share that with us also, that it's established or has any ideas on how we could do that of all earth.
Hi, Ken Crowley. Thank you guys for, for having this tonight, I appreciate it. It's nice to be able to, to speak to you and get a response. So just starting off, trying not to be negative, but just with the response category, sometimes when you go to a Board meeting and you do pose a question to the Board or you do make a comment, it feels sometimes that not anyone that's sitting here, by any stretch of the imagination, but some of the members that aren't that here tonight, that they take everything personally and sometimes the response back to the public comes back the wrong way. I'm not sure they intend for their message to come back that way. I respect that we can't respond to them, but I think sometimes some people come across a little bit more angry than they need to be whenever they respond to a citizen's question or concern, and I don't know if anyone else has had that, but that's why I shy away from going to Board meetings and talking because it's nothing confrontational that I'm trying to do. It's something I have facts for and I feel like sometimes the response I get is that I'm uneducated, I don't know what I'm talking about, or I'm making up my facts. That's just my assumption, my opinion, and no one up here has ever done that to me, but that's just something for some people, I feel like the way they come across is the wrong way. Full-day kindergarten, I wanted to talk about. I think that more people want full-day kindergarten than the administration realizes. I think that if you did a community survey, that more people would be in favor of it. It's not conducive to working parents the way it's currently setting up, set up. One of the issues is when, when you have a kid and you pick a daycare, you pick a daycare for that child and they're six months old or three months old and you have no clue what elementary school they're going to go to at that point maybe, and it's the issue with daycares in certain school zones. It's a struggle. I live in Lincoln, the Lincoln Zone. It's a struggle right now with my daughter going into kindergarten soon to try to find a daycare because she's going to have to switch daycares and I pretty much only have two options. So I'm being forced to uproot my child who's been used to something for the first five years of their life to be able to find a daycare and then if kids probably split between two different daycares. So that's one of my issues with the half-day. The other issue is Lois Johnson offers a service, and I know they're a private company, but they offer a service to kindergarten students in every elementary school but Lincoln. They come and pick them up, they take them to Lois Johnson. Does that solve my problem of my child being in two different places? No, but I wish that something that was offered to every, all the elementary schools but one could be offered to that elementary school. Could we explore the two element, the two daycare programs in the Lincoln Zone? Could they be offered the same opportunity as Lois Johnson with Lincoln? Or maybe they have been offered that opportunity in the past and they've refused it. And then just going along with the kindergarten, I could pay for my child to attend a full-day kindergarten at a private or parochial school and the district is forced to bus them from my house to, let's say, St. Thomas More, and then I can elect for my child then to be bused to their daycare. I live within maybe a quarter mile of Lincoln. That round distance from my child, from near Lincoln to St. Thomas More, all the way over to King School Road, that's a significant busing cost of the district and the district is assuming that busing cost if I'm sending them to a private parochial school. I don't know how much we're saving by not busing to other daycares in the district. I know that was a decision made prior to some of you on the Board. I don't know if that's something we could look at again, expanding maybe to other daycares and having people be bused to different daycares, but that's a big struggle, just basically due to, like I said, the lack. There's two in Lincoln and other areas have four, five, or six options available to them. The next thing I want to talk about is just equity in the district. The big thing is class sizes across the district need to be more uniformed. What's acceptable in one building should be acceptable in all buildings. So there are some buildings where a class size of 16 or 17 students is acceptable, but then there are other buildings where when we're looking at cutting positions or moving staff around, we're cutting a position of 16 or 17 in other buildings. So I think if it's good enough for one building to have a class size of 16 or 17, then we need to explore making sure that that is afforded to all of our students. You're going to see an increase in test scores. That's why some of the elementary schools have higher test scores because they have lower class sizes. The data's going to justify it, the smaller group of kids you have, the better your test scores are going to be. And I'm not saying that every class needs a 15 or 16, just let's look at trying to maybe be more uniform across the district or when we examine eliminating positions, ask is there a similar class size like that in other buildings? Just along those two, just the shuffling of people, that's not conducive for staff, that's not conducive for students. People form relationships with their teachers, form relationships with that building and every year it's just a maze. Every Board meeting, it's puzzles. You guys are moving puzzle pieces around just to fill different positions. And I get why we're doing some of it, but I also think that we're getting close to cutting down to a bare minimum position, amount of positions. And I think you saw that last year when it came to trying to come up with building schedules. I know that was a big contentious point and the reason it's hard to fill those schedules is not because of the teacher's contract, but because when you don't have enough staff to be able to spread out across all those positions. I know that it's defined by his contract, but a 5% raise, I believe it was 5%, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was around 5%. The salary he is making, that is a significant raise every single year and he is deserving of a raise. But I think that it sends the wrong message when you're cutting positions and eliminating positions and he is getting a raise that's equal to half of a salary of a position, you know, that was cut. So I know that's in his contract, but I don't know if something could be looked at to minimize the raise or lower the raise. Maybe he could give back the raise to try to have a position remain, just some thoughts. So thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, would you do me a favor and shoot me an email so I can respond? Unfortunately, we have a quorum here, so we can't get into a deliberation, but I can, I can tell you some stuff one-on-one that I can't do. Okay. I just said if he shoots me an email, I can respond to some of what he said, but because we have a quorum here, we can't enter into deliberation or we're going to be violating the, what is it, the open records law or the sunshine act? The two of them are closely related, aren't they?
Just one question I had on the, the class size in elementary. You know, the more staffing is one solution. You know, the, the more staffing is one solution, another solution is the redistricting.
Lots of area districts have redistricted in the past few years. I do think that redistricting is a better option than looking at closing a school, because closing a school is another way to look at redistributing the numbers. And I think that you would get more community pushback from closing a school than you might from redistricting. Because if you're redistricting to keep everything the same, that's more acceptable than telling people, we're just going to close a school and move 400 people, or however many are in an elementary school. So it's a better of two options, I think, that you could look at, but I definitely understand it's a touchy subject for the community.
I can't, I can say it's not always that easy, though. I, I know there's a situation in George Washington where a teacher left and we didn't replace him. So one of the particular grades went to 26 students per class, 25 and a couple of them. Well, you say, well, why don't you hire another teacher? Well, if you hire another teacher, that's for 30, 35 years. You normally hire a new teacher coming out of school. If you look at what's coming behind that, the class coming up to replace that has 50 in it. So if you had four teachers, you'd have 11 or 12 the next year. So, so sometimes you have an imbalance, and it's really difficult to work with when you have five different grade schools, because you can't level it out, because you get these fluctuations from year to year and, and from district to district. So from, you know, not the school district to district, but the district to that particular school. So it's, it's not easy, as simple as just, well, we want to make it even every place, because you can't really necessarily do that over a long term.
You can't, you can't redistrict also per grade level.
No.
That's the, that's the, if you could redistrict per grade level, then that would maybe solve some of the problems.
Are you, I know there's a lot of, and I'm always a teacher in the district, so I'll throw that out there before I pose this question, but are you able to explore something with the union? I know there's a lot of MOUs that are being passed at every single meeting. Are you able to explore maybe an MOU with the union where you could say, we'd really like to keep the class size down at George Washington, but we only need that person for a year? Could we get an MOU that allows us to hire a long-term sub just for that year? We're only paying for that person for that year, and then at the end of the year, they don't have a job anymore. You're not hiring anyone permanent, you're not being tied to someone for 35 years. Is it able to explore bringing in someone at step one? Benefits just for themselves, or maybe not benefits, but come up with some type of MOU with the union to balance it out maybe from year to year? It's a lower cost, and the district would still save money, you know, in the long run.
I don't, I don't, I don't hear a long-term sub. You can't hire a sub unless there's a person that they're subbing for. So there had to be somebody there in order to hire a long-term sub.
Last, was it the physics example, could you have filled out with a long-term sub for one more year, maybe, to avoid the 26 or 27, so?
No, we can't.
And sometimes there could be a teacher that has a free period that's willing to go and take on the additional period. That's why in the recent contract, we negotiated to get the extra period added to allow more flexibility to do something like this. So if there is possibly an option, I don't know without talking to the experts on it, but nonetheless, there, we could have for that one year, a teacher volunteering, and they get a stipend to do it, so they get more money as well. I have a question, because you said if 16 and 17 is acceptable at, at the one school, that to me confused me, because I think what that meant to me was that that class happened to be lucky that they made, oh, I don't want to say even lucky, I mean, because I don't want to say that 16, 17 is necessary, but there is a study that says that having a decent amount of kids, you get a lot of good questions, and, you know, it helps stimulate the class to come up with, you know, better learning. So sometimes too small a class is not good. In fact, if we go too small, we're not even allowed a half a class. But the 16, 17, for that one school, and another one says 19, say 22, I mean, like we talked about, it's temporary, but it wasn't that we said that 16, 17 is necessarily the number that we want to strive for, and 22 is not. It could have been 20. In fact, the state has, and I forget the exact number, but they tell you what the recommended is, and that's, and the contract, I mean, has, our contracts as teachers, they said, this is what we want as a max. And so we try to keep it under it, but there are sometimes ones, because obviously 16, 17 is not, in my mind, what we call an acceptable number. It's a good number, you know, 20 is good, and it depends on what, what the class is too, sometimes. That varies.
I'm also concerned with class sizes, and I brought it up at board meetings. Now, you've made a comment about, you know, treating employees as puzzle pieces, you know? And I understand that concern also, because I feel we need to improve our relationships with our employees and that. Now, one of the solutions that I see is being, having a little more flexibility between school use to move people around to adjust to those class sizes now. She brought up the concern that if you take someone from one class year and put them in, they may not be as prepared. So I guess what I'm looking for is how, how do we bridge that gap? We can't just, if there is a short-term fluctuation for one year, we can't really, and there's short, or short classes in other grade years, we can't really justify hiring more employees for, like Mr. Means said, 35 years. But how do we bridge that gap with the flexibility with the employees, as well as the fluctuation with class sizes between buildings? What are some ideas that we could use to move forward with our process?
And I think that's what you need to look at, you know, on, on a case-by-case basis. I just know, I work in a different district, and when we knew that we were building a new elementary school, we had a staffing plan that was laid out five to six years before that elementary school was built. We knew how many people we were going to hire each year, how many staff members we needed to have, because we were going to eliminate positions when that new building was open. But we had a long-range plan in prep for that ahead of time. So I think we know what the numbers are with the demographic study, but I guess maybe when was the most recent demographic study done for the district? Because that's what we've used to base our numbers in the district in which I work, and, and we had one done four years ago, and the growth exceeded it, so we did another one again. So I guess using that demographic study to drive your moves, hiring staff will be based on that demographic study. You'll know where your pockets are coming up, because predominantly, you're going to get a pocket from kindergarten to first grade. You're going to see an influx in first grade. You're going to see an influx when kids go to middle school and when kids go to high school. Those first years, those are the influxes. So there's not too much change in those numbers. So I don't know if you're aware, when the last demographic study was done for the district, but maybe that's something to explore, and then have the superintendent or assistant superintendent come up with a staffing plan based on that. And then that way, you have the data to justify, you know, the hiring and the moving, and, and maybe you could let people know ahead of time, hey, we know in three years, this pocket's gone, we know there's going to be changes, or we're not going to hire to fill this position, because like Mr. Means said, we know that bubble is only going to last a year or two, and, and we don't want to absorb that 35-year cost just for, for one or two years, which I fully respect, so.
I would like to make one other, can you hear me in the back? Sharon, can you hear me back there?
Yeah.
I would like to make one other comment, and, and that is the fact that there was some extra confusion last year, because we had two or three people resign right before the school year started. Now, ideally, I would like everybody to be able to get their schedules by roughly the time the last school year ended, or shortly thereafter, so they can have two, three, four months to, not two or three months, to put everything together. But when you have people leave, right when you're ready to start, it throws everything into chaos. And the same thing happens if somebody leaves for one reason or another in the middle of the year, it just really throws everything out of kilter.
Just to follow up with what you said, have you guys ever considered for those bubble years, having a teacher who loops with the classroom? I know where I grew up, we had a couple of teachers who did that, where they stayed with the kids, K1, 2, and then another teacher took them, 3, 4, 5, like that. And so, yes, you have that extra class at kindergarten coming in, you hire that teacher. They move up to first grade, they move up to second grade, like that, so that you do have that consistency, and you're not having 26 kids in this class, but you also don't have to worry about that bubble bursting the next year?
You know, that, that could be interesting, because, you know, the one thing, I, I look, I like data, so I look at all the employment data in, in the state that downloaded compared to the attendance. And one thing that I've found is that, just in terms of total student enrollment and total number of elementary teachers, we have a, you know, more favorable student-to-teacher ratio than, than leading districts around, like Peters, Upper St. Clair, and Mount Lebanon. You know, what, what you highlighted, where you may have a, a class of 26, then you probably also got classes with, you know, in the, in the teens, maybe even low teens. So from an overall resource standpoint, there's probably resources somewhere to be able to do something like that, you know, since our overall, you know, employment is, you know, more favorable than even some of the other leading districts. It's an interesting idea.
Would you call it looping?
Yeah.
I don't have the contract in front of me, because I don't know, is this something that teachers are okay with? I mean, is this allowed by contract?
I don't know about our contract or anything, but I know where I grew up in New York, one of my, actually, one of my mentors did that, where she went K1 and would switch back the next year. But I know some public schools around here, they do have, I want to say Montessori model, and they'll have the same teacher for K1, too. And then there's like an upper elementary, you know? We don't get pushed back on them having to learn a new curriculum every year, especially with the way they teach.
That's what I was thinking, I thought there might be pushback, that's why I didn't know if it was allowed in our contract, but nonetheless, it's an interesting concept. And that would mean that the student that liked the teacher, they're sort of stuck with a teacher for three years.
They're certified to do all the years, though.
Yeah, yeah, right.
They'd basically be the prep time that goes into a brand-new year, they get pushed back.
With that said, I know there's, there are educators in the crowd. I really like that idea also, is, is, what kind of pushback would you get if you had, say, an extra teacher or two for, like certified for each group of grade levels, to be able to fill those gaps? I mean, from the parents, I know we have parents and teachers in the crowd, you know, you might have someone who's teaching first grade in Ben Franklin, one year in their teaching third, and Lincoln the next year if you do this, but would that be a feasible?
A misunderstanding.
Like, to have maybe an extra teacher or two, so if we have early resignations, or someone go out on a sabbatical, certain things, we have someone in, almost someone in reserve to be able to fill those positions for you?
Well, I don't know how it works exactly, but in this area I teach, some buildings have permanent subs. And basically, those people can be used either on a day-to-day basis, you know, this teacher's out today, you're going to be teaching that class, or for longer term. But there, there's certain certification criteria that have to meet to be the long-term sub, but that's kind of how they're used.
Let me back up just a little bit. One of the complaints we get a lot of times is we'll say, you're closing this many positions, and it looks terrible, there'll be 10, 12 positions that look like they're closing. And then what you don't see, or what people don't comment on, sometimes those positions are being switched over, and another position is being opened. The last superintendent didn't use to do it. Dr. Pascarella is doing that, trying to be more open, so everything that's going on is made out there in the public. But really, if you move a teacher from one location or from one grade to another, you're closing one position and opening another. Under our contract, when you do that, you have to go through a whole procedure where it's all determined by your seniority, and there's a bumping process, and it can really create a lot of chaos, because, you know, you could conceivably try and make one move and have four or five different people move if people want to bump and go into different areas. So that's one of the things we have to worry about.
A couple of thoughts. First of all, you mentioned that, well, a few of you have now mentioned the 35-year idea, and I kind of wonder, it's kind of like a mortgage for your house. You may take a 30-year mortgage, but statistically, the average hasn't changed a lot that you only lived there for seven years. So yes, I agree, when you hire a teacher, the capa, the potential is to have it for 35 years, but what is, say, of all the teachers that you've hired in the last five or 10 years, whatever you want to pick, how long do they actually stay? I'm not expecting any answer, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, is it five or 10 years that the average teacher actually stays, at which point you're really only hiring a teacher for five or 10 years? But even more importantly than that, but to take kind of, Ken, your idea a little bit and kind of expand it, if you had pool teaching, I know in Duquesne Light, we had pool work, which you had like a teacher that could float in elementary school, and it was an excess teacher. Yes, it sounds like an excess job, but it isn't, because it's like planning for vacation. If you have all your work filled out and nobody takes vacation, you're absolutely golden. Everybody takes vacation, it just happens, and you know it's in there. So if you had a pool teacher to slot in there for the year or the six months, whatever happens to be, that might be a solution towards it. The other thing is, actually, a comment instead of a solution trying answer, what I've been trying to do, was something that I had heard from the board meetings, and that is one of cost savings, and how can we best save every penny? And I'm all about, anybody that knows me knows, I'm fairly cheap when it comes to finding ways to get things done inexpensively. But the last thing I want to do is see somebody so focused on saving money for the entire borough, to me, you're the board if, because of that, your job is to figure out what kind of money our students need in order to achieve at the level we want to be. If we wanted to be on the Duquesne school level, then we can cut a whole lot of money. But it's kind of the bad term of it, if you're in unions, rightsizing, but it really does apply. If you look at what we need to spend, and if, I have to pay the taxes like everybody else, I don't have a problem taking, paying them. When I get my bill, I pay within a week. You guys need the money to put a good product out there, and even when I didn't have kids in the school, I never thought about it. It's an expensive living in the school district where I do, and my house value benefits in the long run because of it. So to me, raise the taxes, raise my value on my house, but keep the product where it should be, whatever level it is that collectively the board decides it should be. And as the voters, we decide how good of a level we want to achieve by picking board members that say, spend the money, or picking board members that says, no matter what, there's so few people that have kids in the schools, we've got to cut the costs. So as I said, that's not a remark towards any particular board member, especially the ones here who I think it's great you guys show up, and especially a quorum, that's amazing. But it is something that I've heard at the board meetings, and I remember the one guy saying, there is a, almost a, a pushback on comments from the audience, whether it's at the board meeting here or whatever, it's like, well, here's why we're doing what we're doing, instead of just, yeah, that's a good idea, let's write it down and talk about it, or think about it later collectively. It's kind of like the first rule of brainstorming, is never put any idea down at all. You write it down, and then maybe it just doesn't make sense for everybody to have to use orange pencils, or orange and black, or whatever. But the idea is, you take all the ideas as at least worth getting something out of it, even if it is the fact that we need more pencils. So thank you.
If I could make one comment about the, the cost, it, it's, it's a valid point. I think it's sometimes it comes across in the board meeting that, you know, every dollar's a bad dollar, and we're just, you know, focused on costs. But when I came on the board about three years ago, you know, I had the same perspective, you know? We, we were, we were, our costs were going up, and we felt we were too expensive, or relative to what. So I started taking a look at some of the other districts around. And we were, at that time, about almost $3,000 more per student than Upper St. Clair. And, and definitely, we don't want to compare ourselves to Duquesne or something like that, but I guess the three leading districts around, you know, Peters, Upper St. Clair, and Mount Lebanon, we were, we were high. And what we found is that we had a, we, our, our enrollment had gone down, and we really hadn't adjusted our staffing. And so over the last three years, as you've seen some of this reshuffling, and, and of course, that may be a little bit painful, and it, it, it may feel painful to the students, may feel painful to the staff, but it's a lot less painful than, than, you know, terminating people and things like that, so it's, it's a, it's a better choice. Now, after going through this for about three years now, I think we're actually making, you know, very good progress. So when, I wait till summer, because then the budgets are all published for the neighboring school districts, and you can go in and take a look at, how are we doing? But I think that our, our level of investment in a, in a per-student basis, still, we still need to expect that performing at a very high level, you know, with testing and preparation for, you know, the rest of our lives, but we should still be performing at a high level, even while we bring down our cost per pupil, not to the lowest level of, of, you know, districts, but to the, to the level of top-performing schools.
Yeah. Please, please remember, while we're trying to cut back on-- Yeah. Please, please remember, while we're trying to cut back on excess staff to save money, it was three years ago, we decided, I think it was $1.2 million we put into the Chromebook Initiative with a one-to-one, so every student would have a computer.
Chromebook.
Chromebooks. And, and that wasn't a one-time investment. That's going to cost us about $300,000 a year. The other thing is, is the safety concerns came up this year. And schools really are pretty safe, but the public wanted additional safety. We hired three resource officers, and that's going to cost, I'm guessing, about $250,000, $300,000 a year by the time we had benefits in. And if we hadn't done some of those other things, it would have been hard to do under the existing budget. So, yeah, we're interested in saving money where we don't have to spend it, but where it's going to give us a good return on investment, everybody on the board is willing to spend it there.
Yeah. And also, just to add a little bit more to it, to help maybe give you peace of mind, that the board, and I think everybody on the board, I can't speak for everybody, of course, but I, it's my belief, I think everybody on the board has the number one goal is the students, okay, to make sure that they are given the best education. I know, like, we talk at the board meetings a lot about finances, but that's an important factor. We do have a lot of people that are concerned about that, too. But the fact is, when you look at the newspaper and the TV and listen to all the districts around, there are a tremendous amount of districts that are laying off teachers, raising taxes, and cutting programs. And this is not in Duquesne, we're talking, okay, so, you know what I'm talking about. So like Jim said, we have invested a while, we also invested in educational things like the Wonders Program, and we're looking into some other things right now. There's this thing called Spider. I mean, it's, and there's a whole bunch of things that we don't want to talk too much about, but the fact is that, yes, it's a good concern, but if you see anything deviated from that, let us know, saying, look, here's where I see you're not spending money, and I think this is going to help the educational aspects, you know, the curriculum, whatever it might be.
And also, as we are doing those financial, making those financial decisions, we are constantly looking at our test scores. We're constantly looking at our students' achievement and so forth. And as of, as of now, we're, you know, we're not, the way, you know, you would, you're talking, is that these cuts are creating deficits in our educational program, but we haven't seen that. But we're keeping a close eye on it. You know, we're looking at all of those things all the time. And if we would notice any, well, we have noticed a few areas that we have to concentrate on, but not a difference from previous years. It's just, it's a glaring area that we have to focus on.
Yeah, and the areas that we've noticed, I don't think are, are affected by any of the staffing changes.
They're not new areas. They're just areas we know that we have to focus on educationally. So even though we are not hiring to replace certain positions and so forth, we're still keeping a very close eye on our students' achievement. And if that starts to be affected, then we're, you know, we'll have to reevaluate some things that we're doing. But we haven't seen that, that it is. But I really like your idea of a pool teacher. We have had that in the past. And right now, we are having significant issues with substitutes. And so we maybe will look, should look at that as a solution. But again, as Jim said, that that's an investment in a long-term teacher, but still, it would be somebody that we wouldn't be, you know, in terms of substitute costs, because it's so hard to find substitutes anymore.
With the substitute thing, I did just send a message to Vicki. Steven at Precision HR is not getting back to people that are contacting him. So I know I put my papers in, I've since taken a different position, but I, there are at least five people who have either tried to be subs, nurses, paras. We want to do it because it works with our schedule. We don't want full-time jobs. We want to be in the schools with our kids, and they're not getting back to us. Yeah. But what I really wanted to say is, I wanted to thank you guys for the CCAC partnership that you're doing right now. I think it's smart, super forward-thinking. I think people won't appreciate it until much later. However, who is paying for it? Are you guys sharing the cost? Because I know part of it is cost-cutting teachers at the high school level. Is that cost being transferred directly to the parents, or is it being shared?
Parents.
Parents.
Yeah, sure.
The, what?
So when students dual-enroll at CCAC to get college credit instead of taking an AP class, who is paying for that?
I'm not sure. I think we pick up the cost, but I'm not positive on that.
Okay.
The tuition.
And when it's like college credit, it's a high school student, it's like a fourth of a regular college credit cost. You went to CCAC, it was like $60. Your high school was $50.
But at the moment, like, if you take an AP class, it costs you about $120 to take the class at the end, or the test at the end?
I don't think we pay for it. I think the parents pay for it.
Is that something that can happen, that there can be cost sharing?
I don't know, but it's a question we can ask.
Okay.
But I'm fairly certain the parent pays for any college courses that the students choose.
Yeah, I haven't heard that we do.
But the purpose is to save us money in the long run, right? So we don't have to do AP courses and things like that.
Well, it's so that you can earn college credit while you're still in high school, but you're still paying for it. But the AP, the AP thing, though, is to earn college credit that actually is money in your pocket.
Right. But is this changing, then, the number of AP classes that we have available to the students?
Not really. The numbers, I don't think the numbers have changed that much.
Is that something that we can get an answer back on, a specific answer?
Whether the AP classes are...
The number of AP classes offered, has it changed?
Have they increased?
Yes. The number of sections of AP classes has it changed.
Okay.
Dr. Pascarella has stated we're offering the same number of sections in our courses that we have in the past. So I don't know if that's true every single course, but I mean, pretty much that's true.
The, I think, I think the same courses are being offered, but you are accurate in saying, in asking whether there's the same number of sections. Last year, some of the sections decreased in the, some of the areas.
That's my concern, because it's a great idea that if it's being done so that we can reduce the number of AP sections, and the parents are bearing, bearing the burden of cost, that's an issue.
Well, one thing you should keep in mind, though, if, if somebody takes a course at CCAC, a lot of times, that's more portable than taking an AP class. You take an AP class, you have to take the test and pass the test, and some schools will accept one grade, and other schools won't accept that when they want the higher grade. But most local schools, state schools, it's easier to have a CCAC course accepted than it is the AP course.
And I agree. That's why I thank you for it, because I don't think enough people realize that it is more portable than the AP class, but that's really going to hurt our ranking in the long run, too, because most national rankings are based on the number of students that take and pass an AP class.
Yeah. I, I think that is also an area that we need to improve, is the number of kids who are in the current number of sections, who actually go on and take the tests, because I don't, I've got to, we've got to get more data on it, but when I looked at it earlier, I don't think our ratio was that high compared to other schools.
That's correct. That's one area we're, um...
Yeah.
Hi, Sharon Janisik. I want to say thank you so much for having the meeting, and we really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. I wanted to talk about community involvement and family engagement. As, we have a lot of people who are very, very engaged, so this is wonderful. And it ties into what Mrs. Alsop was saying about looking into having you all participate more in what's going on in our schools all the time. There's a program that Johns Hopkins University started about 25 years ago called the National Network of Partnership Schools, NNP-S. And they run a program, and we can participate in it. There are schools all over the country that are involved in it. And it generally has the tenants of parental involvement, family engagement, and community partnerships. And it provides a model where involving both at the building level and at the district level, the community and families and parents all together to improve schools increases student scores, and they do so much better. And actually, I don't know if they're offering it yet this year, but PTAN offers a grant for school districts who would like to participate in that program with a focus on, meaning, don't forget about, special education students. And they have a grant that helps fund the training that's required, and I believe that the district-level team needs to go to Hershey for the annual state conference, and it funds that as well. And it, it is a program that provides parents and community members with an avenue to participate in the school. I think we have a very involved community. We like to be involved in things, and we want to participate, and I think a program like that would allow people to come serve on the committee for your building. And someone from each team serves on the district level, and you work together on problems that are district-wide and problems that are just within your school. Even things like, how can we make sure that our students with disabilities feel welcome at our next PTO event? Is there something we can do to improve that? Can we make an adjustment in our playground or our lunchroom? In our school, do we have a need for a math night? Would parents like to find out about Common Core so they can help their second grader with math using terms they don't know? Those sorts of things. And having that driven by the parents, the community, the guardians, as opposed to, there are some things offered, but they're, they're offered. They aren't necessarily developed with the people who are the stakeholders. And I think it's a program that would be very worthwhile for our community, especially because we are a very involved and interconnected community. And it might even give you all an opportunity, if you don't have kids in the school right now, you know, maybe you could all serve on one of those boards for a school. Someone takes William Penn, somebody gets the high school. And it keeps you involved in what's going on and what the needs are for those students in those buildings and those families that we serve. Thank you.
How is, how is this organized at a local level? Are they committees around the school, around a particular school? Are they district-wide?
There's a building-wide...
Board, or what are they?
It's a building-wide committee that usually includes, there's a list of who has to be included, off the top of my head. I'm thinking it's the principal, if there is a guidance counselor, at least one teacher, at least one parent. If you were applying for the grant from PTAN, so that special education students were included on purpose with forethought, you would have to have a parent of a special education student in that building. And then someone from each of those buildings serves on a district level. And, you know, there are unique issues in each school that those teams can address when they meet monthly. And then as the district comes together, we address it as a district. And I think it would help provide a vision, a mission, a path forward, and give people the opportunity to be heard. And the people who want to help solve problems have somewhere to go to participate in that.
This is in addition to the PTO, or would it be an offshoot of that, or would it be under that, or?
I would think you would want a PTO person involved. I don't know that they have PTO at the high school, but in the buildings where they do, have someone involved, because that's part of the entire community. And it's, it's a focus on the school as a community, and as kind of a 24/7 place where we take care of each other. And if there are kids who need help, we figure out a way to help them, and where can we refer them, and how can we all help each other? How can we grow stronger, both in the building as well as at a district level?
So it's through Johns Hopkins?
Johns Hopkins University. It's NNP-S, National Network of Partnership Schools.
Say that again, N-N?
P-S, National Network of Partnership Schools. And PTAN probably has a grant. I know Mrs. Sutton had looked into it at one point.
P-A-T-T-A.
Yes, it's the Technical Assistance Center.
Would you be able to send us the information?
Yes, I can email you all links.
That'd be great.
Mrs. Sutton had looked into the grant at one point, and then it, I don't know if, it was the first year Dr. P. was here, and I don't know if he didn't have time for that or what happened.
I really like this idea. I've been advocating for committees made up of all shareholders for a while now. And I think it ties into what Mrs. Alsop was looking at, having building-level people connect from the board, more connected and aware. And this may be an avenue that we could pursue that wouldn't circumvent that chain of command, like I was saying, but give involvement to the administration, to the building-level people, as well as parents and other people.
Right. And the principal is a member of the building-level team. Obviously, you wouldn't do that without the principal.
I really think that's worth investigating.
Hi, everyone. I'm Darren McGregor. Just a couple comments about reducing class size. There are different ways you could reduce class size in, in elementary schools, high schools. I did hear some, someone talk about co-teaching. I couldn't hear too much in the back. Is there co-teaching going on at the high school? In these, let's say, in the three targeted areas, algebra, literature, and bio? Because I know most school districts, including mine at, at Mount Lebanon, we're seeing, at least when you compare the scores from similar kids. I mean, we, we've got, compare ourselves in Bethel's to Upper St. Clair, to Peters, to Mount Lebanon. And, you know, growing up, you know, my kid's grown up in Mount Lebanon, I mean, Bethel Park, me being at Mount Lebanon, there's really not a lot of crossover there. They're the same kids. But then when you have programs at elder school that are being a little bit more effective, and I'll give you an example, our Algebra One scores last year were 89% of the kids were proficient or advanced, as opposed to Bethel Park, which was 77%. 95% in literature were advanced or proficient, as opposed to, I want to say, 81% in Bethel. So being a little bit more creative, like co-teaching, I, and in my high school, every literature, algebra, and bio classes are all co-taught with a special education teacher. And now, we're not in there just to work with the special education kids. We're there to work with all the kids. And a lot of times, we have breakout groups. So now, you've turned 22 to one and to 11 to one teacher ratio. And those, that does impact the scores. You know, you're going to, you're going to be able to target those questions that those kids have, and you're going to get more out of that 47-minute class period than you normally would with one teacher up in front. So just a little idea. Two thanks here. I'm not, I don't, don't want to get into personnel, but I did notice that there's a 60% position open for health and phys ed at the high school. Just to clarify, it, that's not a reduction from a full staff member to a 60%, is it? Or did you move maybe a 60% teacher into the vacant position, and, and now you're hiring for that person? So, and the...
Was it on our agenda last time?
It's going to be, I think, we've got an email that says there's going to be a health position being discussed at our next board meeting, which is August. This month we're off. There's no more meetings.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. You're not, you're not knocking a 100% position down to 60%.
Is that on an agenda somewhere?
No, it was, came up on Facebook today, saying Bethel Park posted.
I saw it, tweet.
In our notes that we got, yeah, in our notes, but I don't know how, how that got to you guys already, because it got in our notes, but we need to discuss it. And sometimes, if it is, say, 60, it might be because there's something else going on to balance out, like you heard earlier, to be able to discuss. Sometimes it's not black and white when you look at it.
Sure.
We don't know the answer to you.
You're right. We don't know the answer, is the thing right now, you know.
Okay, fair enough. My other question was, with, right.
Oh, wow.
Now, you don't follow Facebook.
It's lost out.
Now, last year, I brought this up at an August board meeting about reducing administration at the high school and the impact that may, that may have. Do you guys have data? Are you looking at that situation, maybe hiring another administrator? Talking to several Bethel Park High School teachers, a lot of them are pretty frustrated about discipline referrals. And at this point, you know, you get into like March and April, I'm not even going to write it up, because nothing gets done. It's hard to run a building with, with limited administrators. It really is. I'm not sure if you guys have looked at, at that outnumber of discipline referrals, number of detentions, that outnumber of suspensions, things like that, as compared to years, years in the past, but that might be something to take a look at. It does alleviate a lot of the pressures on a teacher when you know a kid who's maybe acting out, maybe acting out for a variety of reasons, but somebody above their pay grade is also managing that, that behavior. And if you can manage one behavior in a kid, and we've all been in classrooms personally as, as a student or as a professional, one kid can really upset the apple cart. Okay? And especially my population, I have 21 kids on my roster as an emotional support teacher. 21 kids could pretty much rule the entire school of 1,700, if, if not properly managed. Okay? So that's, might be something to look at. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
One comment on the discipline rates and that sort of thing, because I say, I read one of those from our notes that we get, we get these emails and they give you tables and you see those tables. And I was saving them and I was almost going to go and put them into a graph and just graph... The graphs are so much easier to see trends and things like that than looking at numbers and trying to go back and all that, but I hadn't done that. So maybe I might just go do that. You know, it takes time to do, but, you know, nonetheless, it's always good. Maybe we can have them give us graphs instead of numbers instead of just to show how it's changing. So this is something we could propose possibly, you know.
I have a question about your co-teaching, interdisciplinary teaching you were talking about. So you call it co-teaching, not interdisciplinary teaching?
No, it's co-teaching.
When the special educators and the regular ed classrooms call for teaching. So you say your scores are high. Are they higher since you instituted this or are they the same as they always have been? Because Mount Lebanon's scores are high.
Yeah, typically they are, but like you said, it's... We're just looking at, you know, Keystone's haven't been mandatory by the state forever. So they've been, for example, algebra's been anywhere between 88 and 91% at Mount Lebanon over the last few years. Biology keeps getting... That's been increasing on a yearly basis. And with literature, you're not gonna get much more than 95%. I mean, that's... You're just not. And I think 95%, 94, 93 is a great number to attain in any high school, any public high school such as Bethel Park.
How long has the co-teaching been going on?
It's been going on a good six, seven years. So... And what it does, you know, in our district, we have to, you know, per our contract, we have five periods per day that we teach. And so one of the periods that I would be in my classroom, offering support for my emotional support students for drop-in services, testing, things like that, well, now we're down to four, that's okay. Some of the kids that I do teach on my roster and other learning support rosters are also in those co-talk classes. And so like you said, it's just not for the special education students. When I run breakout groups, study groups, day or two before tests, I would say half the kids are, you know, special ed, the other half are regular ed, who does that. We developed a rapport with one another and they could stop by my room any time of their day. So it's... If you're looking to keep costs down but be more creative with personnel, that's a great way to do it. And, you know, it's also a shot in the arm of the special education teacher because you get to do something different. You get to learn material, too. That's the best part. You know, I co-taught chemistry and biology for six, seven years. I can answer any biology or chemistry question. And so that's invaluable, you know, across the board. So things like that.
Now, you said some of your, or a lot of your special education clients or students are in these classes now. Does that help your... Help with the least restrictive environment or does it affect that at all?
Sure. Well, we... Yeah, because they're in a regular education classroom. Right.
But then the regular ed teacher has the support, the training to deal with some of the additional modifications and combinations?
I'll give you an example real quick, you know. Typically, because I'm not the teacher of record, for example, for algebra. So the teacher before, day before, assigns homework. And so I'll, you know, we'll start off class and I'll go over the homework problems from the night before. All right? And the teacher will teach the lesson. I can help out, you know, facilitate questions because if I have a question, I guarantee there's some kid out there and sitting down in a class has a question, maybe just too afraid to raise their hand. Okay? And so he'll teach the lesson and then there'll be seat work and individual work where the two of us will circulate around the room, guiding kids and answering questions along. So to me, that's a good model of co-teaching and using your resources. I'll help out by grading the test. That way, that's a 24-hour test that he has to grade, things like that. So it's pretty fun.
Would you say that all sections of, say, eighth-grade algebra are... Have co-teaching or...
No. Ninth grade, not all sections of, but we do co-teach in all three mandated tests, the algebra, the literature, and the bio.
Okay. Starting at ninth grade?
Starting in the ninth grade. They do it in middle school as well.
Yeah.
But it's more prevalent in a high school.
Let me clarify. You said you do it in all those classes, but you do it in every section?
No, not every section. No. So you have to, as you go through, you know, programming for the next school year, these kids, you look at their scores from eighth grade and they're struggling and they're either Keystone, if they're taking algebra in eighth grade, they're struggling in that, they didn't pass it, they were below basic. Well, that's a kid that's gonna be good for a co-teaching class.
Okay. So that's where you invest, based on the scores?
Right. And then, you know, special education teachers, they won't mind losing one section because they're gonna be helping a whole bunch of kids across the board. So it's, again, you don't have to hire, you just need to use resources a little bit more efficiently. That's all. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi. I just had, I guess, a comment or whatever, and I'm not sure how much y'all can do about this. And this is nothing against any teachers that my daughter has had, but she's been in the district since third grade, she's going into eighth grade. I've spoken with some other parents, too, and I'm just, as a teacher and a parent, I'm seeing some deficiencies in certain areas that are persistent. I think some of it is because there's so much focus on the testing that teachers aren't teaching things like writing skills. They don't read literature, which maybe is one of the reasons when they get to high school, they're not doing so great on the Keystone exams. My daughter has read one book every year in her reading class. One year she read two, but it's one book a year because they're focusing so much on text-dependent analysis and these short essays that they never dive into literature, they never get into some of the questions that I'm sure appear on an AP literature, the Keystone literature and that sort of stuff. I'm just concerned... My daughter, until she got to seventh grade, only had science or social studies every other day or every other quarter. Like, she would have a quarter of science and a quarter of social studies. You know, those are things you build on for science and math, they go hand in hand. And I understand that they want to use that time to give them a double period of math or something. They reach a saturation point anyway. You can sit them in that classroom, but after about an hour, they're not going to learn anything else because they're just done at that point. And instead of saying, hey, they need to be learning science or they need to be learning social studies, which then again is gonna play back into literature because you all know how they're so interconnected and everything, I'm just concerned about this intense, as I see it, intense focus on the standardized tests to the exclusion of other skills that they're going to need if they're going to college. You know, you have to be able to analyze literature, you have to know basic history to understand some of the stuff you're gonna know. Science, if we have such a focus on STEAM, why aren't we teaching science every day? To start when they hit seventh grade, it's too late, in my opinion, for them to all of a sudden catch up. I don't know how other districts around here do it. I'll be honest. Pittsburgh does not do any of it, but Pittsburgh also does not have anywhere near decent test scores. They're completely focused on reading and math and it doesn't work. And so I just think we need to, as a district, look into making sure that kids are getting all of the instruction they need, not just the instruction to pass those, you know, two standardized tests at the end of the year.
I've always, and I think most people share this view, I've always thought education's about teaching people how to learn, not what to learn. Always been against teaching to a test. I'd like to see us investigate more the leeway and the flexibility that the P.A. Future Ready Index gives us in coming or stepping a little bit away from focusing on teaching to the tests. It's an area that I've been concerned with for a long time. I think we have a lot of students, not in Bethel Park in particular, but a lot of students everywhere, coming at, not ready for the future because they've been focused, their education has been focused on passing tests, not learning, not being able to think on their own, not being able to do deductive reasoning, you know, a lot of the skills you need in life. So I really do value that point. With that said, I do understand also the value of having standardized tests at some level to be able to compare apples to apples. I mean, when I was growing up, you had the California Achievement Test. We weren't taught just the pads, the California Achievement Test. The California Achievement Tests were given to us. So there were benchmarks that we knew we were succeeding in, excelling in, or we were deficient in. So I'd like to see as a district, us explore that flexibility a little more that's been given to us through legislation that's been passed on the federal and state levels.
Yeah, it's been eased up and all that. It's good. So one thing to add to what you said about the, what we look for, a lot of us look for kids to want to learn. I mean, like, how to learn, that's what he said, and I wanted to add, want to learn as well. And I think that's what they did, number one goal of the teacher is to make them, to teach them how and to want to learn. And then from there, they're on their own and that's the whole structure. So that's what's... And critical thinking and all this stuff, it's called critical thinking. It is something that we need to...
And I think especially for, you know, not every student is good at math and not every student is good at reading. And for those kids who, they're really into history, or they're really into art, or they're really into music, and we have great music program here in Bethel Park, that's what's going to keep some of those kids in school. But when all they're getting, almost, is reading and math, you're gonna... They're gonna just zone out and you might not ever re-engage them. Like I said, seventh grade, that's gonna be too late for some kids.
And with that said, I would like to expand on that a little bit. That's another very passionate subject of mine, teaching. Not every kid is geared towards going to college. You can make a good level or good living as a tradesman or a nurse or, you know, a million other vocations that don't take a four-year degree. And there are a lot of ways to do that without the crushing college debt that you have. We have a good program called Naviance that helps us identify the strengths and the skill sets that our students have early and expand upon that through their education. I've been trying to look into how well we utilize it. I know Mount Lebanon has Naviance also, I believe, and other schools do, but it's like any tool. If you don't use it to its fullest capability, you know, the tool's only as good as how you use it, how you implement it. So with that said, I do want to focus. There's going to be a large shortfall. There's already beginning a large shortfall in a lot of trades, a lot of vocations. We're looking at a nursing shortfall, we're looking at trade shortfall. These are good livings that our students could come out and, you know, follow and pursue. And I think we have done a fairly good job at making sure that we aren't just teaching kids to go to college. We're teaching kids to pursue a career that they can make a living, they can be happy and they can succeed. And I think we can always do more, find ways to supplement that and pursue it further.
Just to help you maybe find the answer you're looking for, Ben, with the Future Ready Index, they have to have portfolios at certain grade level points. So a question I might want to ask the middle school and the high school administration is how are they utilizing Naviance as part of the student's career portfolio? Because the surveys that they're doing in there and the data they're getting from there could be kept as part of the student's portfolio to meet that Future Ready Index criteria. So I might want to get a copy of that plan or look at that and I might give you a quick answer if you're looking for it.
Okay.
Hi.
My name's Kathy Gibson. Just move out of the way. I just wanted to piggyback off of Darren McGregor's over here. First of, I had a student, I have a kiddo, who went to the high school this year. I went to Bethel Park High School. I taught at Bethel Park High School. I no longer teach. I never want to go back because of what you just said there. We don't teach children, we don't teach them to be lifelong learners, and we don't teach... All we do is teach them a test. From February until they finish taking the test, these kids are fried. Where is the fun? Where is the sense of community, getting the kids all together? Because when you spend that much time being cranky and teaching to a test and not enjoying one another, you create a society that doesn't like each other. And I have a huge problem with that, which I'll go wait on tables and make more money than a teacher, so I don't have to deal with that when I go back. So with that said, I also want to, and then I'll go back to you because I loved yours, but with that said, I have a seventh grader. He's as smart as a whip. He can't stay in school. This is a kid, it just drives me nuts, and I've seen it with a lot of other kids, this Common Core math, which I know you can't change, but somehow we should be able to change as a group of people, bigger than this room, obviously. But when a seventh grader doesn't know how to add, subtract, or do fractions, and he's smart as a whip, this kid could tell you anything, he can figure things out, and he can't necessarily show you the work, but he can figure stuff out in his head. He gets penalized for that, but yet they're handed a calculator. Why? Why are they handed a calculator? So we can get all those in before the PSSA test. Teach them to be functional adults. It's as simple as that. If you can't figure out how to make the ratio for your gas-oil mix into your weed whacker, that's pathetic. And that, I mean, we're not teaching kids basic skills. That's like lifelong skills. Every single kid needs that. Where the tradespeople can come in and charge you, you know, 500 bucks for an hour and a half. So, yeah, go be a plumber. The other thing was, is the co-teaching. I was special ed. I taught emotional support here, I taught learning support here, and I taught at Slippery Rock High School. Slippery Rock High School had a phenomenal... The teachers were phenomenal in sharing responsibility and co-teaching. I co-taught in science classes. I could tell you anything about biology, chemistry, or physics, and ecology. And I had more regular ed kids bugging me than I had special ed kids bugging me. They were constantly overflowing my room morning, noon, and night when I was there. It works as long as the teachers are willing to work together. That's a key. I was fortunate. Most of my teachers were very great and they wanted me there because they knew that those kids were gonna be in the classroom and they knew they needed my help to get it done. With that, that's a great idea, the co-teaching. The last thing I want to say is, when you walk into IMS and you walk into NAMS and you are greeted by at least two, you know, secretaries, administrative assistants, and then you walk into the high school and I see poor Mrs. Murphy, she looks like a ping-pong. Bing, 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 the poor woman can't... And that's a security issue. You can't... That door, and you can't blame it on her. She works her butt off, she's a lovely lady. I absolutely love her, she works her butt off, but she cannot manhandle that whole front office. But yet you have a small building with much less. I know you have other secretaries back there, but just food for thought. You want to talk safety? People are your best bet for safety. These things right here are your best bet for safety. I dealt with lots of bomb threats in my years at Slippery Rock. Right here, the best things for safety. Dealt with a lot of drugs up there, right here. And if you, in that front office is where you're gonna see it the most. In addition to the high school, I thought my days of little kid bullying was over. Wrong. The high school's horrendous. If you guys would let me, I would do it for free. I would go down there during the lunchtime and I would proctor, but I don't follow rules. I'm mama. And when mama's down there, you're gonna listen to mama and you're gonna pick up your stuff and you're not gonna throw food and you're not gonna be an idiot. And that's just the way it goes. Or you might need some Catholic nuns there. With that said, things aren't, and once again, that's where your security is, too. It's with your people. And if you have happy staff, you'll have happy people, you'll have happy kids, you'll have happy janitors and happy secretaries, and life will be copasthetic. The administration, there's two. There's two. There's what, about 1,700 to 1,900 kids up there? Two. How can one person, and I went to, I was in podunk Slippery Rock, there were two there. I don't understand how you can possibly manage that. And I feel bad for those people because I see the stress. And I feel bad for those people because I see the stress. I'm a good body and mind reader. I see the stress on their face sometimes. I don't understand why there's just two. I don't understand why we only have one social worker up there that's contracted out. I don't get it. Our kids today are more and more complex. They have lots of problems. It can't just be my kid. I've seen kids worse than my kid. And I've seen, you see the increase in ADHD, anxiety, depression, the drugs, and you have one social worker. That one social worker cannot possibly touch base with the numbers that he has. So with that, your administration, your front office, you put the right people in there, your social worker, those are the three things at the high school you need to contest that bullying. So I'd be interested because I don't even know if my kids get some of the things that will even make it into there because I know how that works. A lot of paperwork gets flushed away. And please, if there's any way to get rid of teaching to the test, let's just teach kids. That's all. I'm done with my soapbox.